I'll now read the information regarding virtual meeting format. Welcome to the November 3rd, 2021 City Council Meeting, the City Council of Los Banes. City Hall Council Chambers remain closed to the public. In accordance with Assembly Bill 361, all members of the City Council and staff will join the meeting via phone or video conference, and no teleconference locations are required. Following alternatives are available to members of the public who wish to watch the meeting and/or provide comments to the City Council before and during the meeting. Audio/video broadcast, this City Council meeting can be accessed in real time from your computer, tablet, or smartphone at the following links: Cable Comcast, Channel 96, the city's YouTube channel, and then the Zoom meeting where you can get on the city's website and get the Zoom. And then there are also phone links there, phone numbers you can use to link on with meeting ID. Auto-comment during a public meeting. Public comments will be taken at the time each eligible agenda item. If you would like to submit written comments, please submit them by mail, by email, to the cityclerk@losbanes.org, or drop them off at City Hall 520 J Street. If you are a Zoom Video Conference participant to comment by Zoom Video Conference, click the Raise Your Hand button to request to speak when public comment is being taken on an eligible agenda item. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. If you are a phone participant, participant to comment by phone, please call on one of the above-listed phone numbers. You'll be prompted to raise your hand by pressing *9 to request to speak when public comment is being taken on an eligible agenda item. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments, and press *6 to unmute yourself in order to speak. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Important things to remember during the comment, period. All attendees shall be muted upon entry to the meeting. Please do not raise your hand if the item currently being heard is not the item you wish to speak on. We will call for public testimony on each item individually. When the item you are interested in is called, public speakers are invited to raise their hands. Raise yours, and then we will call them in the order they are raised. You may, of course, speak on multiple items, but your comments during each item must address the item currently under discussion. Speakers attempting to speak about items other than the item currently under consideration will be muted and asked to wait for the item they're here to speak about to be called. If you have any questions, you can email the city clerk, cityclerk@losbanes.org, or call City Hall 827-2412. I see Pastor Johnson has not yet joined us yet. Okay, so we will move on to call the meeting to order. And so I will call the meeting to order at 6:05 PM, and we will ask Police Chief Breezy to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Chief.
Now, we'll go to item three, roll call, Ms. Melanie.
Jones.
Present.
Lambert.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Lamis.
Here.
Faria.
Here. We have a quorum. We'll now move to item four, consideration approval of agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Do I have a second?
Councilmember Lambert, second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis, and a second by Councilmember Lambert to approve the consideration, the approval of the agenda. Roll call, Ms. Melanie.
Jones.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Lamis.
Yes.
Faria.
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Agenda has been approved. We'll move to item five, presentations. I have two this evening. Both people I know very well and know their contributions, and it makes it very, gives me a little extra happiness and joy to share this with them because I know how hard they have worked to achieve their goals, and the goals of others in serving others. So the first one we have is for Charles Picas. And Mr. Park, Mr. Picas, this is in recognition of being named the California Sacquawkeen Sectional Softball Coach of the Year for 2021 by the National Federation of High Schools. What a great honor. Congratulations, Mr. Picas. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, you know, thank you, Mayor, for the recognition. I mean, it means a lot. You know, it's really a tribute to the kids that I've had and the coaches that have worked with me, and, you know, it's an honor shared by them, and I really am thankful that the council's recognizing all of us for that in that sense. So, thank you.
You are very welcome. Our honor and our pleasure. Keep it up. I see you're coaching some more tonight. That's great. Thank you. Our second recognition is a certificate of recognition for an Eagle Scout. Now, earning the Eagle Scout honor designation is a very difficult thing to do. There are not very many of them, and Ryan Sowersby was not able to make it tonight, but we are presenting this in recognition of the hard work and dedication he has shown in order to earn his Eagle Scout designation. He is thanked for all the service he has provided to Los Banes Troop 85 and to the community as a whole. And I'm going to allow him to expound on his project, but he's not here to do so. Remember that to earn an Eagle Scout requires a special project, and if I remember right, he built a special cover. I'm thanking for the veteran, but I forgot to check it because I thought he was going to be here tonight, so. Congratulations, Ryan Sowersby, and continue, we wish you well in continuing in your path of service to your fellow citizens. All right, now we will move to item six, the public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines on how to participate and make comments are listed on Pages 1 and 2 of this agenda. Comments received prior to the meeting will be read into the record at the appropriate time during the council meeting. And so now we will open the public forum. Ms. Melanie, do we have anyone?
I don't see anybody with their hand raised, and I have not received any comments by mail or email prior to the meeting.
Thank you very much. Seeing no comment in the public forum, we will close the public forum and move to item seven, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine. Will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a City Council member. And for this, we will go to Ms. Melanie.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 229-383 through 229-557 in the amount of $873,591.37. Minutes for the October 20th, 2021 City Council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6413, awarding the bid for the purchase of a new 2021/2022 Ride-On Sidewalk Concrete Grinder, authorizes the Public Works Operations Manager to issue the purchase order to ME COM in the amount of $89,610. City Council Resolution Number 6414, awarding the bid for the purchase of a new 2021/2022 Model Medium Duty Contractors Truck, authorizes the Public Works Operations Manager to issue the purchase order to Santos Ford in the amount of $56,660. City Council Resolution Number 6415, awarding the bid for the purchase of a new portable video inspection camera, authorizes the Public Works Operations Manager to issue the purchase order to WECO Industries LLC in the amount of $63,346.87. City Council Resolution Number 6416, reauthorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the City of Los Banes pursuant to the provisions of AB 361, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Melanie. We'll go through council to see if anyone wants an item pulled for either discussion or separate vote, and if you could let me know at the time of which of your preference, please. Mr. Jones?
No items, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
Could we, I would like to pull F just for discussion.
Very good. And Ms. Lewis?
No items for discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Mr. Yamas?
No items, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, let's go ahead and pull item F for discussion, and for that, we go to City Attorney Vaughn.
Good evening, Council. Mayor. AB 361 became the law in September of this year, and it amends the Brown Act to allow virtual meetings during the governor's declaration of state of emergency. The approval of the resolution on your agenda tonight allows the City Council and its commissions to continue to meet virtually for the next 30 days. Staff is hopeful that in January of 2022, Cal OSHA will relax its emergency temporary standards concerning vaccinations and face coverings in the workplace so that the city can consider returning back to in-person meetings. The City Council chambers is considered a workplace, and under those emergency temporary standards, everyone's required to be vaccinated, and if you're not vaccinated, everyone's required to wear a mask. And so the city administration has decided, for the time being, until Cal OSHA hopefully relaxes, those standards that will continue to meet virtually. Those standards expire January 14th, but Cal OSHA, depending on where we are in that numbers game with the pandemic, could extend those temporary standards. They could relax them, they could change them. So, we're kind of at a standstill in terms of the status quo, at least until January 14th. That's my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Mr. Lambert?
Yeah, I just wanted to update, I just wanted to see if there was any, any more news that came down, you know, under this. Basically, just wanted some more info on where we were at, where we stood on that.
Yeah, I try to monitor the Cal OSHA website.
Good, I appreciate it.
I try to monitor their website on a bi-weekly basis while I'm writing this current staff report, and nothing I've seen on their website indicates that there's going to be any movement before January of 2022, and there's no hint as to what they might do in January of 2022. Although there, if you read their website, they're pretty active in handing out fines for violations of these workplace standards, so that's what I know.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Mr. Lambert, would you like to make the motion to consider, to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as it's read.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, Yamas here, I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Lambert, second by Councilmember Yamas to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Ms. Melanie, roll call.
Jones.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Lamis.
Yes.
Faria.
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. We will move on to item eight, acceptance of grant deeds from the Los Banes Designated Local Authority, the DLA, as successor agency to the former Los Banes Redevelopment Agency, RDA, to the City of Los Banes. Once again, we go now to City Attorney, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mayor, City Council. This item is the acceptance of three more DLA properties in addition to the two that you've already accepted, I believe, two meetings ago. Talking about three parcels, two of those parcels are in the Ward Road area, one's 11.79 acre parcel, it's the current site of the city's water tank, and it's just east of the Gilbert Gonzalez complex. That one is designated for governmental use. There's a map that I included in the staff report on page 53 that locates that parcel for you. Second parcel is on the opposite side of the Gilbert Gonzalez complex, and it's 8.21 acres just west of the Gilbert Gonzalez complex. That part, particular parcel is designated for partial government use and partial future development. The future development portion of that parcel is the bigger portion, the governmental use portion is just kind of a sliver of maybe 15% of that parcel. And again, I embedded a map in the staff report on page 54 so you could locate that parcel. And then the final parcel of these three is a .86 acre parcel on G Street in the vicinity of the soon-to-be new police station facility. It's designated for future development, and that one's located in the staff report map, anyway, at page 56. Now, all three of these parcels are currently undeveloped, other than the water tank is on a portion of the first parcel, but all of them are impacted by arsenic and have been cleaned up, but they are subject to a land use covenant on each of those parcels because of the arsenic levels, and that land use covenant prohibits those parcels from any residential development without further cleanup. I checked the title on three part, all three parcels, that's what's delayed acceptance of these parcels, is getting the title company to provide those title guarantees. There's really nothing of note other than, other than what you would consider routine easements and such. Other than the two Ward Road parcels are subject to a reimbursement agreement in favor of Triple M Cattle Company for their construction of oversized infrastructure in the area. I believe it's either storm drain or sewer infrastructure. So, should the city develop those two parcels, there will be a reimbursement amount based on a formula owing to Triple M Cattle Company for use of those facilities. And so with that, I'm here to answer any questions on these three parcels, and staff is recommending adoption of Resolutions 6417, 18, and 19. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I'll go through council for comment or question. Mr. Jones?
No comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
No comments.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
No comments.
Thank you. And Mr. Yamas?
No comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I sit on the board of the, of the Successor Agency, the Designated Local Authority, DLA. I'm very pleased that we've been able to move these forward, finally getting this land, this RDA land, in the hands of the City of Los Banes so that we can put it to use for our citizens. So, the chair will, I have to take, Mr. Vaughn, I have to take these as three separate motions, is that correct?
Yes, three separate resolutions with three separate motions, please.
Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion for Resolution Number 6417.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Yes, these were read into title already. Am I correct?
Pardon me?
These were already read into title?
I read, thank you for pointing, I read item A into title.
Okay, I can read, I can read it into title, it's okay.
Okay, so, all right, let's do it that way. I read the item eight, but I didn't read the individual items. My humble apologies. Go ahead, I'll let you read them in the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 6417, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Los Banes, accepting the grant deed from the Los Banes Designated Local Authority as successor agency to the former Los Banes Redevelopment Agency to the City of Los Banes, APN number 083-100-081.
Is that sufficient, Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Very good. Do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilmember Jones, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. So, I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis, and a second by Councilmember Jones to approve City Council Resolution Number 6417 as read. Ms. Melanie, roll call.
Jones.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Lamis.
Yes.
Faria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. I'll go back to Ms. Lewis. If you would like to make the motion for the other two as well.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number six four one eight. A resolution of the city council of the city of Los Banos, accepting the grant deed from the Los Banos Designated Local Authority as successor agency to the former Los Banos Redevelopment Agency to the city of Los Banos, APN number zero eight three dash one zero zero dash zero eight four.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, Yamas here.
Member Jones.
Okay, uh, Mr. Yamas jumped in first on this one, so, um, uh, second by Mr. Yamas. So we have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis, second by Councilmember Yamas to approve council resolution number six four one eight as read. Ms. Mallon, roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamis?
Yes.
Faria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. And we'll go back to Mayor Portem Lewis.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number six four one nine. A resolution of the city council of the city of Los Banos, accepting the grant deed from the Los Banos Designated Local Authority as a successor agents, uh, agency to the former Los Banos Redevelopment Agency to the city of Los Banos, APN number zero two six dash one four one dash zero zero one.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, would you like to second this one?
Yes, Mayor, I will. Second that, please.
Thank you. I have a motion of Mayor Portem Lewis, second from, uh, City Councilmember Jones. Ms. Mallon, roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamis?
Yes.
Faria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much. I'm going to move on to item nine. Before I do, uh, I will go to City Attorney Vaughn.
Uh, yes, Your Honor, uh, yes, Your Honor. Yes, Mayor.
You've been working hard again.
Yeah, I, uh, I believe Mr. Lambert has a statement to make.
Okay. Mr. Lambert?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have been advised by the city attorney that since my place of business is within five hundred feet of this two properties that I cannot participate in this item. And I will be signed off.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Okay. Are we, there we go. Okay. So now we will read item number nine. Uh, acceptance of grant deeds from the Los Banos Designated Local Authority, DLA, as successor agency to the former Los Banos Redevelopment Agency, RDA, to the city of Los Banos. And once again, we go to Mr. Vaughn, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Um, these are two additional parcels to the five that you've now accepted. So this will be number six and seven. Both of these parcels are on G Street along the rail trail. Um, first parcel is a one point one acre parcel in the vicinity of the soon-to-be uh, new police station facility. It's designated as future development property. Um, it's on, in your staff report on page ninety-five. Um, and the second parcel is a point nine two acre parcel on the corner of Seventh and G Street, also along the rail trail. Uh, that one's more in the vicinity of the community center. Um, that one is also for future development. Um, that one's in your staff report on page ninety-six. And, uh, a thank you to the city clerk for page numbering those pages. It makes my job a lot easier and hopefully it's easier for you to read your staff reports. Um, uh, both parcels are undeveloped and neither is subject to a land use covenant as the levels of arsenic on those parcels did not, uh, warrant any type of cleanup. Um, there is a little, uh, wrinkle in that in that the legal description by the, um, the DLA included, uh, multiple parcels and included these two on the LUC. But I verified with the Water Authority that the LUC does not apply to these two parcels. And I will be at a future time working to clear that from those two parcels. But those two parcels are, uh, not impacted by arsenic. Um, title otherwise, otherwise title is clear on those parcels. And staff is, uh, recommending that you adopt resolutions sixty-four, twenty, and twenty-one. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Uh, we'll go through council for comment or question. Mr. Jones?
No comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Lewis?
No comments.
Thank you. And Mr. Yamas?
No comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, um, once again, great work on this, Mr. Vaughn. And we're safe in assuming that this, this land is clean and will be certified as clean. And this is not going to present a problem to us in the future.
Yes, all, all, all of the reports, uh, indicate that it was below the levels necessary for cleanup. It just and, um, the DLA's development of the land use covenant, they included these two parcels in the legal description, which got recorded and the title company picked that up. And, um, so I, I think it's going to be easy to, to deal with, and it shouldn't create any problems in the future.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve city council resolution number sixty-four twenty.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go on and make the, um, uh, the motion. Um, see, the first one, yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number sixty-four twenty. The resolution of the city council of the city of Los Banos, accepting the grant deed from the Los Banos Designated Local Authority as successor agent to the former Los Banos Redevelopment Agency to the city of Los Banos, APN number zero two five dash one one four dash zero one three.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilmember Jones, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis and a second by Councilmember Jones to approve city council resolution number six four two zero. Roll call, Ms. Mallon?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert? Lewis?
Yes.
Lamis?
Yes.
Faria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Item B. Chair will entertain a motion for item B.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go on and make the motion.
Ms. Lewis?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number six four two one. A resolution of the city council of the city of Los Banos, accepting the grant deed from the Los Banos Designated Local Authority as a successor agent to the former Los Banos Redevelopment Agency to the city of Los Banos, APN number zero two five one one four dash zero one one.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilmember Jones, I'll second that.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis and a second by Councilmember Jones to approve city council resolution number six four two one. Ms. Mallon, roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert? Lewis?
Yes.
Lamis?
Yes.
Faria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Once again, excellent work. It's long, been a long time coming. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor of Staff. And I know that, uh, Mr. Panero very excited about the getting ready and getting going on developing those parcels. This is a big step in the city having control over those parcels and good things happening along that corridor. So we're excited about it as a staff and hope we can be bringing to you some really uh, quality projects in the near future.
Beautiful. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Panero as well. Now we'll move on to city manager's report. Oh, sorry, first, and the advisement of public notices, which there is no report this evening.
We could let Mr. Lambert back in the room. There he is.
Oh, yes. This, this virtual world, uh, you know, you don't see them sitting at the die so I miss, I miss their live and breathing. There he is. See, he's on. We'll see if he's got a camera up. There he is. Mr. Lambert is back in the room. Welcome back. Uh, now we will move on to item ten, advisement of public notices, and we have no report this evening. Item eleven, city manager's report. City Manager, Mr. Panero.
No report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Panero. Uh, report on Merced County Association of Governments, Peninsula Clean Energy and Measure V Committee. Uh, Measure V West Side Met in the Bay. And, uh, they asked if we could modify the spending plan for the Pioneer, Pacheco Pioneer Corridor Plan. And we, our staff completely agreed with the plan and worked out a plan that still keeps our project on, on track, uh, for twenty twenty-four. To get Pioneer widened and get some signalization. Also, we're in the process of synchronizing those lights on Pacheco. It was a very excellent example of a committee working together, um, to, uh, for the benefit of everyone. So I really appreciate the staff was all, all hands on deck on that. And they all worked, uh, many hours. And I came up with a great plan that the Measure V West Side Committee accepted, uh, worked with the measure, and worked with MCAG staff. And they came up together with a plan that was completely accepted by everyone at the meeting. And so we're very pleased to see that, keeping everything on track, working with our neighbors. The, uh, PCE in the process of acquiring some more wind power. Uh, there are some contract details are working out. And, um, once again, expanding the power, uh, generation capacity. Don't forget, that's going to be our new power generating organization. They were also very excited to find out that we do have a new car dealership in town because there are grants and special programs available for people to purchase electric vehicles, uh, new electric vehicles. And so, uh, that's a big advantage for, for our citizens. And we're looking forward to being able to take advantage of that. So that's what I have for tonight on those three items. And now we will close that report item and go to the city council member reports. And tonight we start with Mr. Jones.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank staff for getting, uh, page numbers on the agenda. It makes a world of difference, so much faster to flip through these pages, uh, when we're trying to reference a certain document. So thank you, staff.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Lambert?
Uh, other than what Councilmember Jones said, I, I did appreciate the page numbers. Uh, other than that, I have nothing else to report. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Now I got to turn my page here to see who's next. Mayor Portem Lewis?
Mr. Mayor, well, this past Saturday, October thirtieth, um, the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District sponsored a tune-in and tune-up at our, um, uh, Los Banos Fairgrounds. And, um, we had some one hundred and twenty-eight vehicles that passed through for emissions tests. And if the car failed the test, um, depending on the income level, there was a five hundred dollar voucher to help participants repair their car in hopes to pass smog. Um, there were also roughly seventy, um, people who came through who were interested in replacing their vehicles. And the sample vehicle that was on site was a Chevy Volt Hybrid. And of course, there's financial assistance, uh, for the purchase of a new vehicle. Uh, there were also nine people who, uh, received vaccinations for COVID. There were thirteen rapid tests and one which is called a PCR test, which is the, the longer, more accurate test that they have to send to the lab. Um, other services that were there, uh, were food distribution. And we had, uh, students from our local junior college who were out there doing tire pressure checks. Uh, it was a, a really phenomenal day. I think it was, um, it, it made me happy to see what was going on in the first one that has happened for quite some time. So, uh, one hundred and twenty-eight people showing up. I, I think, um, uh, the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution District, uh, did a good job of getting the information out. And the city also put it on its Facebook site. So thank you to everyone, to staff that helped in this. And, uh, I'm looking forward to future events, uh, for this organization to help our recipients here in Los Banos. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Thank you for, uh, serving on that airboard. Great representation, uh, from Los Banos there. Big advantage for us too to have you there. Thank you. And Mr. Yamas?
There he goes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just wanted to, again, uh, unfortunately, I wasn't able to be there this past Monday for the, uh, penning of the promotion of, uh, engineer Juan Ramirez. So I want to congratulate him on that achievement. Also want to, uh, thank Public Works, uh, for all the work they're doing to, uh, trim up the trees, uh, take care of our landscaping. Uh, I know it's a lot of work, a lot of times in Clement weather. So I, I want to say thank you. Thank you for, city manager for, uh, spearheading that. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. Uh, well, other great work going on. We appreciate it very much. Uh, numbering of the pages sure does help. Uh, back in, I know a lot of agendas and a lot of different boards that I sit on. We'll have those page numbers in the big printed packet, which sure is nice to have it there, uh, in our, uh, electronic packet. I remember the days when we didn't have electronic. We had our big stacks of paper every, every meeting. So moving forward and doing a great job. Um, the, uh, wanted to thank Mayor Portem Lewis for going to the park event for me and representing me there, uh, that I wasn't able to attend on November twenty-third, on October twenty-third. Uh, congratulations on Penning, uh, Ramirez. And I think that is all I have for tonight. So with that, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, can you read the record about the closed session not being held?
Yes, ma'am. Before we go to the adjournment, um, item fourteen, closed session, uh, the conference with labor negotiations pursuant to Government Code, section five four nine five seven point six. Agency-designated representative, city manager, Panero, city attorney Vaughn, human resources director, Mallon, finance director, Williams, legal counsel, Tufo, employee organizations, Los Banos Police Officers Association will not be held this evening. And with that, chair will make, accept the motion to adjourn.
Mayor, Councilmember Lambert, make them adjourn.
Uh, Mr. Lambert, I think you were first. So, Mr. Lambert, and do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis, second.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Lambert and a second by Mayor Portem Lewis to adjourn the meeting. Roll call, Ms. Mallon?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Lamis?
Yes.
Faria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Meeting adjourned at six forty-two PM. Thank you, everyone. Bye now.